Sorry, I apologise for the late start of this meeting. We have rather a lot to get through on the Eastern Committee. Before we commence the meeting, I'd like to draw your attention to the fire regulations, which are on the screen behind me and alongside the public gallery. And also, please, can you ensure that your mobile phones are either switched off or switched to silent? And councillors, I remind you as usual to speak directly into the microphone and make sure that your card is pushed firmly into the console. Right, so we move on to the main items of business. The minutes of the meeting which took place on the 17th of May 2017 have been laid on the table for the last 30 minutes. Are you content that I sign these as a correct record of that meeting?
Agreed.
Thank you. Have there been any apologies for absence, Amy? There must be.
Thank you, Chairman. Apologies from councillor Lee, councillor Hunter, councillor Peter Martin, councillor Thornton and councillor Nick Williams.
Thank you very much. Have members declared any interest before the meeting?
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Els has declared a pecuniary interest in item B1 and will withdraw from the meeting while that item is considered.
Thank you. Do members have any other non-pecuniary or disclosable pecuniary interests to declare? Jolly good. Have there been any questions received from members of the public, Amy?
Thank you, Chairman. None received.
Peter, are there any updates that we should be aware of?
Thank you, Chairman. I don't have any updates this evening.
Thank you very much. So regarding site visits, in the event of site inspections being necessary as a result of consideration of the applicant's applications at this meeting, these will be held on Monday the 10th of July 2017 at a time to be agreed. Now to move to the planning applications. Item A1, erection of two dwellings and associated works at land at Furbank, Croft Road, Godling G U 7, 1 B S. Richard, would you like to introduce the application to the committee, please?
It's for land at Furbank. It's off Croft Road and it's for two dwellings. I think they're both two-bed dwellings and the necessary work, so we'll move on. And there you have a location plan. You can see where the site is in red outline. You can see that it's actually on Latimer Road with Croft Road to the top of this plan there. And you can also see Carlos Street coming off Latimer Road there. Okay, we can see the aerial photograph of the site. Where the cursor is now is where the adjoining property Furbank is. And just next door, near enough where that blue dot is there, sort of thing, is where the site is. You can see there's lots of planting and it's fairly green. Here we see the block plan. We see both the units. Unit one is closest to Furbank and unit two is closest to the neighbouring property number 47. Also, and we can see that the property extends past the rear of Furbank there, I think by approximately 3, 3.1 metres. And you can see number 47 next door there. Here we have some views of the site. So for example, A is facing toward the site with Furbank in shot from Croft Road. B and C and D and E are all looking out of the site. We can see in particular note in B is 32, it's 34 Carlos Street. And we can see Carlos Street there in number C and you get a bit of Furbank there in E. And if everyone agrees, we'll move on or if anyone's still looking.
I can't see a ski forward. Sorry, I used to have eyes in the back of my head after seeing.
There's some more photographs. We can see in F, we see Furbank looking towards Furbank. It has a door and a window in that elevation which would face the unit one. We see G is looking toward the site. Again, we see number 47 in shot there with a glimpse of Furbank. Again, H is a good shot. It shows the rear of Furbank. And I, J, I and J are just views toward the rear of the site. And K is looking across toward Furbank, so across the site there. Here we are going to start with the previously refused application. There have been two previously refused on the site, but the one that most relates to this is the earlier one and it is the one for two dwellings. Here we can see that the dwellings are in a similar position although not attached, like we'll see shortly. Here again, you see the elevations. You see units one here and unit two. They're in a similar position again, not identical. And this is the rear of the previously refused application. And there are a number of windows and doors in there. And then again, looking from the direction of number 47 towards Furbank, that sort of direction, we can see the elevation here again and how the site rises to the rear there and road level there where the cursor is. Of particular note of the previous application that was refused and also refused at appeal was this front elevation that you see there. It's very different, which we'll see in a minute, from that of the proposal now. It has glazing elements, balconies, all sorts. And particularly of note, that led to views towards number 32 and 34 Carlos Street, particularly number 34. And that was one of the reasons that the application was refused at appeal. I must just bring to your attention that the application was not refused due to it having a more modern appearance, as the inspector considered that there was no defined appearance of that street. Because as you see, Furbank looks different to the proposed properties and that then again looks different to the terrace here of number 47. So they concluded there was no defined appearance down that part of the road. Here we see the proposed southern elevation of the scheme in question. Again, it's looking very similar, has some high-level windows there. Those windows would look out towards 47 but towards the side elevation which has no windows in and the front which is already overlooked. Again, the northern elevation, a blank elevation. That elevation would be the one which is closest to Furbank, the adjoining property. If we move on from there, you'll see, again, the rear elevation is pretty similar to that of the previous elevation, previously refused scheme. You can see there that there's going to be a basement retaining wall, windows and doors. And here, the crucial, one of the crucial elevations here is the front elevation. We'll note that the properties now no longer have a gable to the front, they have a gable to the side rather than to the front, the sloping roof sloping away. You can see the more standard-sized windows which better match those of Furbank and the terrace here, of which 47 is here. So officers considered that these windows would not lead to a detrimental level of overlooking towards 32 and 34 Carlos Street. And we can also see, while the two proposed dwellings are higher than Furbank, they're not higher than the terrace of properties which 47 is part. So in term, that is good in a way because as you come down the hill, the properties get lower as you go down the hill towards Croft Road. Here we have a section drawing of the properties, some windows there facing toward 47. Again, they wouldn't overlook any areas of concern. We'll move on again. We'll move on again. Here we can see the proposed ground floor. We can see the lounge and bathroom or toilet there, along with the proposed under, sort of croft parking, under croft parking. I'll remind members that in the report, highways have no issue with the parking in terms of highway safety. Also, there is the necessary amount of parking in line with the council's parking guidelines. Again, you see that some of the property will extend past Furbank. Officers note that that will have some effect on Furbank, some overbearing effect, but not enough to consider refusal. Again, first floor plan, we can see that there is terracing, proposed terracing to the rear. The land already has terracing there, so it's not considered that would lead to any more significant overlooking than already exists. We can see they have dining rooms and sort of living rooms there. And finally, we have the proposed second floor plan. You can see the bedrooms to the back and some bedrooms to the front, so the two-bedroom properties. I note that some views would be over to the rear of Furbank, but it's not considered they would be materially harmful as they would be at a more obtuse angle. And again, some views would be out to number 47, but they would be at such an angle that officers do not consider it materially harmful. And finally, we have the determining issues as you see there. And just, officers have a recommendation to approve this application. And I would just like to say that the included inspector's decision forms a big part of the officer's report. Oh, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you, Richard. This is a public speaking item and I believe the procedure has been explained to Mr Daniel Fairs, who I would invite to speak now. Good evening. As you've been told, you have four minutes from when you start speaking.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you today about the issues the local residents have with the current planning application for the land near Furbank. I'm speaking on behalf of the local residents as my home, which is number 34 Carlos Street, is likely to be the most impacted if this proposal does go ahead. But I will be covering the objections raised in the 16 different objections against this proposal. The issues raised by the objections largely fall into these four areas, which is firstly, overlooking and loss of privacy and light; secondly, over inappropriate development; thirdly, parking and traffic safety concerns; and lastly, the impact of building work. I'd like to now step through these in slightly more detail. So with regards to overlooking and loss of privacy and light, the residents of 47 Latimer Road, Foley on Croft Road and myself have all detailed in their objections letters the impact to this and their children. So particularly for ourselves, we have grave concerns at the windows to the front and particularly now the side of the properties. We'll be looking into our children's bedrooms, which are directly opposite. And indeed, the applicant actually appears to be aware of issues here because we've had quite a number of letters from him which have suggested everything from providing blinds for our windows to bricking up our windows and actually purchasing our house from us. We believe the only thing he hasn't actually suggested is making significant changes to his plans to actually propose something far more reasonable for that plot. The height and the width of these properties, along with their proximity, will overbear our property and also lead to a loss of light to ourselves and to the surrounding homes. For the over inappropriate development, this was actually a common theme across all of the objections. The garden of Furbank is one of the few open areas in this locality, providing a much required visual relief from the surrounding dwellings. Attempting to place two tall properties the full width and to the front of this proposed plot destroys this to the detriment of the local area. It will change the whole feel of the entrance to Latimer Road, creating a tunnel effect, making it feel much narrower and more oppressive. We also don't believe that the style of the building adds any value to the local area. For parking and traffic safety concerns, this too was a common theme across all the objections. Latimer Road is very narrow and has no pavements. It is one of the main routes used by children to and from school and also to the playground area in Buzzbridge. It is also used by students going to the Buzzbridge College. We have big concerns that adding extra cars manoeuvring about with limited views at one of the narrowest parts of this street puts at risk the safety of everybody. With regards to parking, Furbank property will actually lose its one and only parking space and they, the current residents there already have more than one car. And it's also likely that the residents of the proposed properties will also have multiple cars. And although the plans do show that you can park two cars there, we do not believe this is going to actually be possible when you consider that the entrance to the properties, the bin storage area is all in that same area and also the actual logistics of moving about on that street to reverse cars in and out is going to be very difficult. The parking spaces themselves will also be very close to the windows of our house, causing extra vibrations, noise and pollution when in use. We also believe there is going to be a lot of impact of the building work which, to do with the excavation, which will cause dust and pollutions to be released. The residents of 47 Latimer Road are also concerned about the impact to the structure and integrity of their home. And we also believe that our home is likely to suffer damage with the large vehicles move manoeuvring about in a very tight space. So in summary, the residents kindly request the council to refuse this application due to the impact to the building work, parking and traffic safety concerns, over inappropriate development and overlooking and loss of privacy and light. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr Fairs. Members, I open it up to you. Councillor Martin.
Thank you. If I can start please with a question of our officers. On page 11 of our agenda, but you can see the outlines, the plans for what's proposed and the two parking spaces that we've got for each property. And I appreciate Richard's comments that that conforms to the planning guidelines. Have we, is the loss of the parking for Furbank also a material consideration for this? Because it does appear that although we're providing parking for the properties that are going to be part of the development, we are losing the parking as a result for the, essentially the host property, which would therefore cause additional parking strain in an area which is already heavily strained as it is. I just wondered if perhaps we could get a comment on that and whether that is material consideration or not. Thank you.
Officers, would you like to address that? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, it is a material consideration. We have, we have to be guided by the previous inspector's decision, which is for two houses on the same site with parking arrangements to be the same. So I believe Furbank does have one, one space off-street. However, with the inspector's decision there, we wouldn't advise it would be stone off grounds to refuse the application on those grounds alone. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Martin, did you wish to, no, Councillor Reynolds.
Sorry, I have a question also related to the parking. I noted it looks extraordinarily tight, the parking there for two vehicles. Do the officers know, please, the sort of rough dimensions of the space, basically from the front of the, well, the edge of the road if you like, to the front of the dwelling? If you can give me a rough idea what, at its narrowest point and its widest point, what those dimensions are? That'd be great. Thank you.
Richard, Tim, somebody with a scale rule.
They're scaling here at between 5.5 and eight or so metres. The standard parking space dimensions are 2.4 by 4.8 metres, so they would comply with those guidelines.
Councillor Reynolds.
I'll come back. They might comply, but take a sort of standard Audi A4 estate, that's kind of nearly 4.8 metres alone. Then you've got to have a bit of space to be able to get into the front door of the house because I noticed the parking at its narrowest point goes right up to the door. And as you say, as the speaker said, you know, you need to have wheelie bins potentially, you might have bicycles or storage of any other sort for children. So it's going to be very tight and in practice, you know, the chances are that you may only get one car on those, that front car parking space rather than two, which I appreciate may comply with the standards. But then of course, we do have to take into account the loss of the car parking at Furbank as well. So I think there is an argument there that could potentially be looked at because I do think it is very tight. I mean, in essence, my objection to this scheme, I think, is very much that it is overdevelopment. At Godling Town Council, we've looked at this in all its guises over the years and have, and well, I have also, I've always thought it's overdevelopment on this very narrow and small site which doesn't go back terribly far. I note also with some interest the comments again made by the speaker, which we discussed at the town council in the offer of blocking up windows in order to be able to get a planning application in, which does seem completely and utterly perverse. So my view, I think, is that it is overdevelopment. I think the amenity actually for the residents of those houses is going to be reasonably poor with a living room which has windows to the front, but you'll have two, two cars or one car taking a lot of the light away and there's only going to be a light well at the back. So I think it's not fantastic. And it's going to cause disruption, I think, in that area. As the speaker said, you know, Latimer Road is very narrow, especially at that point. Extra traffic movements isn't going to help, but I think, you know, trying to get two cars into each of those little spaces is potentially just going to cause a great deal of disruption at significant times of the day. So I'm afraid that unless I hear other, from other colleagues persuades me in another way, I do think it's overdevelopment of this site. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Councillor Bolton.
Thank you, Chairman. Question to the officers. Is there any way of requiring the residents to use those two parking places so that they don't park on the roads, which I believe is a neighbourhood parking scheme? Thank you.
Peter.
Thank you, Chairman. We can't insist upon people parking in their parking spaces. You can make, you can make provision, but it's public highway and elsewhere they can park and it'd be completely, we would be unable to enforce that type of condition. Thank you, Chairman.
Anybody else like to, Councillor Holder.
Thank you, Chairman. I noticed on page 18 that planning permission was refused on appeal because a proposed development by reason of scale, form and sighting would result in an overdevelopment of the site that would be detrimental to the character of the street scene contrary to local plan policies D1, D4 and the NPPF. Now, as far as I can see, that objection still remains. You're trying to put in a pint into, a quart into a pint spot. I am afraid I will be joining and not supporting this application.
Thank you, Tom. Councillor Martin, sorry.
Thank you. I think, I share the difficulties that other members have and I don't much appreciate the size of this, but we have to be absolutely mindful of the inspector's decision when they overturned the, this council's refusal. And ultimately, the two reasons for refusal were overdevelopment and issues with the balconies. The balconies are no longer there, so that has been overcome. And the inspector is reading on page 19, the inspector concluded that the proposal would not cause unacceptable harm to the character and appearance of the surrounding area, in particular the street scene. Now, however, the inspector did conclude that the proposal by virtue of a material loss of privacy by reason of overlooking would be harmful. Now, I mean, really, we're looking at whether this is still sufficiently harmful to number 34, that there is, that there are sufficient grounds for refusal. And I suspect ultimately, we're coming down to a judgment on that single issue. Our officers have concluded that it is acceptable and it's a case of whether we agree with the officers or not. And really, that's the sole reason for refusal, that I think we would be able to sustain as to whether it's ultimately, whether we believe there is still a case of overlooking. Now, in my eyes, the windows are still there. You can't not have the windows in the front of the building. I understand that. I think that would be somewhat oppressive if we built brick walls and houses with no windows. And that's almost what the applicant is suggesting that our objector is to do. I'm not sure this does overcome the overlooking issue. Because the windows are still there, it is still directly overlooking number 34. And if we were to object to this, I wonder if officers might give us a steer whether they believe that will be sustainable. And I focus on the fact that this is a judgment call and it really comes down to our, our judgment is perhaps, listening to other members, that this is still harmful and that the reasons for refusal would perhaps be that the applicant has not overcome the concerns of the inspector's issue with overlooking. But perhaps we could get a comment from our professional officers. I'd be grateful.
Thank you, Councillor Martin. Peter, would you like to comment on that?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Councillor Martin, entirely correct, it's coming down to a matter of judgment. And see, the point we've got to is they've removed a sort of balcony along the frontage, which if you've got a balcony, you can stand out on it, look out further. And with the provision of significantly smaller fenestration or windows on the front elevation, we think that opportunity to overlook those properties is significantly reduced. There will still be views possible, but test of whether is it significantly harmful. And we've come down on a view that don't believe it is, but it is a judgment for members to make and that is something that if they feel strongly about, that could be supported. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Bolton and Councillor Reynolds.
Thank you, Chairman. I find myself in some difficulty here. I accept that changes have been made in the current application as outlined on pages 19 and 20, especially the removal of the proposed front balconies. I consider that if we were to reject the application, the applicant is likely to appeal as presumably has been done in the past. An inspector may find in favour of the applicant as the grounds for an earlier rejection have been removed. I am concerned about the continuing development in a crowd, a very crowded area of our town with consequent pressure on parking, infrastructure and other facilities. However reluctantly, I have to accept the officer's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, any more comments? Sorry, Councillor Reynolds.
So I'm looking at the appeal inspector's report and then point number 15, he says that by reason of sighting, there would be a material reduction in the levels of privacy currently enjoyed by the occupiers of number 34 by reason of overlooking towards the first floor windows. The erection of obscure glazing for the master bedroom and dining room windows would not address the unacceptable harm because they would remain a potential outlook from the proposed balcony. Now, if those balconies have been removed, then one thing that perhaps we should insist on is that the remaining windows are obscurely glazed and that would hopefully cause some degree of privacy to the people at number 34 if we feel that we can't overcome the inspector's other position, which is that it isn't overdevelopment. But the inspector seems quite clear that that is an option, which obviously was previously considered, but because there was balcony, obviously it didn't, it wouldn't make any difference. But if there's no balcony and if those windows, all the front windows were obscurely glazed, then that would at least be of some benefit to residents. Thank you.
Any comments from the officers? This is interesting because about three quarters of an hour ago, we refused an application for converting offices to residential because they had an awful lot of obscure glazed windows to their bedrooms, et cetera. So I'd be interested to hear what our officers have got to say on this one.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, as a, as a main outlook from a bedroom or living space, it's not ideal to have obscure glazing to those areas. There's comparison drawn with that other application earlier, which is similar, but that had other outlook and other unobscured windows on side elevations and things like that. But I don't think it's ideal to have your principal windows obscure glazed to try and overcome a percy, or a harm that you perceive going to come forward. So I think we need to make a, take a view that it's either acceptable as it is or not. And I don't think producing a condition requiring obscure glazed windows would, would be a sort of good level of amenity for future occupants. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Reynolds, you wish to come back on that?
Sorry, I do want to come back. I mean, that proves my point. So I think I'd still object to this because there is a loss of amenity to residents, which obviously we cannot undo because one method of doing it is going to lose the amenity to the people in the new house. But the amenity of the people in the existing house is far more important than the amenity of the people in the new house who have yet to even purchase it or know they're going to live there.
Thank you. Councillor Martin, you wish to come back?
Yeah, I was going to say much the same thing in as much as if we had an application before us that had obscure glazed windows in the main windows, we would probably be talking, I'd certainly be saying that this is reasons for objection on the, on the grounds of a loss of amenity for the residents of the property that will inhabit it. And I wouldn't be comfortable at all. I, I think I would still simply go with, my judgment is contrary to the officers and it is really one way or the, it could easily go one way or the other. My judgment is that actually there is still My judgement is that actually there is still material harm by virtue of there being any sort of fenestration. And therefore, actually, you can't, you cannot overcome that. And I don't think anything can be overcome over what the inspector has said by virtue of there being fenestration at all.
Thank you, councillor James.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm really sort of like this, but it says in his conclusion that the identified benefits, i.e. two houses, is significantly and demonstrably outweighed by the unacceptable harm caused to the living conditions of the occupiers of the neighbouring properties. And I just say, by removing a balcony, has not changed that. And the fact that somebody's even thinking of perhaps having glazed, you know, glass that you can't see through, shows that actually it shouldn't be there. Because we're now thinking about how can we overcome something by not having it there and changing the way it's designed or something would overcome that. Removing a balcony has not changed it. And we're now trying to sort out something. When I have this feeling about trying to sort out something, my heart then says there's something wrong with it. Because if we weren't trying to overcome the problem, it would be okay. But as we're trying to overcome a problem, there must be something slightly wrong with it. So there must be another way of doing it which would overcome it. The fact that there are obviously houses either side of it, which obviously perhaps don't cause problems, I don't know why these two are causing such problems. And the inspector says it is harmful to the occupiers of the other residents. It doesn't just say the one house opposite, it's other residents. So perhaps looking left, right and centre, there is something wrong. If they were perhaps further back, you know, make them bunkers, single, two stories, further back in the mountainside, they'd be further away. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Upton.
I do have problems with overdevelopment, but having toured Godalming quite regularly, I can see there's quite a bit of overdevelopment with the properties that have been built onto the public footpaths, virtually with their front doors. So there's a problem that I have, that the space is available now to increase habitable properties in the Godalming area. But I do agree that if they do cause inconvenience to other residents... I noted that we've already turned down a planning application for one property on this site. We've now considering two properties on the site. There's a bit of change. So I wonder what the reasons were for delaying, objecting to just one property, which presumably wouldn't have caused so much overbearance. But the general picture is that it is an inconvenience. But we do have problems with our inspectors now, and I've got an awful feeling that due to the housing stock, this might go through.
Thank you, members, any... councillor Bayam.
Well, just one more point, I mean, my immediate concern, exactly as everybody else is, it's overdevelopment. It looks horribly, excuse me, overbearing. Oh, excuse me. But equally, we did ask the question right at the very beginning, loss of parking for the adjoining residence that was the owner of this particular piece of land, I presume. And so I think there's a number of good reasons why we should be turning this down. I feel the inspector probably will go with us and refuse it, but we can never tell.
Thank you, councillor Wheatley.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Yes, I appreciate our difficulty having an inspector looming above us. However, to my mind, that looks like shoehorning. I'm not happy with it at all. I feel it's an improvement on the previous design, but I think one modest dwelling there, further back, would probably be okay. But the way it is, I'm sorry, I'm afraid I don't like it.
Thank you, I tend to agree with you. I think the fact that they're building right up to the boundary, the side boundaries on both sides, and all these awkward angles have been created to make use of every last square inch, as shoehorning is the correct phrase, I think. Members, have any last questions before we move to a recommendation? Right, so the recommendation is that permission be granted subject to conditions 1 to 9 and informatives 1 to 8 set out on pages 30 to 34 of the report. May I have those in favour of the recommendation to grant?
That's one.
And those against?
Eight, Chair.
Any abstentions? No, thank you, members, the recommendation to grant is rejected. May I have a proposition, councillor Martin?
I would like to propose that the committee refuses the application with particular regard to the inspector's decision of the last application, and specifically referencing the overlooking of the properties to number 34 Carlos Street. I'm sure our officers will be able to help with the detailed policies that that might relate to, but hopefully that gives us enough to work with as a recommendation today. I don't think we could justifiably come up with any other reasons. I'd rather have one strong reason than a number of other sort of slightly tenuous ones. And that directly deals with the inspector's comments of the earlier application.
Councillor Reynolds, are you seconding that application?
I was just going to, yeah, definitely second it, very happy to do so. I think I was just going to ask officers just about the parking issues, because I think the parking is so tight, you know, on paper it looks like you can get two cars, and reality is you probably only get one, which then falls down on our parking requirements. But also, we are losing a car parking space from Furbank. So if the officers feel there's any mileage, then it'd be nice that it's included. But if they don't think so, then I'm quite happy that it isn't.
Peter.
Thank you, Chairman, just taking that point on car parking. I think on page 38 of your agenda, under paragraph 20, the inspector considered the point on car parking. He says, or they've said, the Highway Authority have not objected to the proposed development, and there are no reasons for me to disagree with the authority's assessment on those grounds. So I think it would be difficult to defend that. I do appreciate what's been said, but with that decision, I think it would be hard to go forward. I've got some wording around.
Thank you.
Suggestion of councillor Martin. I suggest on page 19, sort of tweak what we've got as reason two at the top of that page. And the proposed development by reason of the front-facing windows at first and second floor level will result in an unacceptable loss of privacy and amenity to the occupants of number 34 Carlos Street. The proposal would therefore be contrary to local plan policies D1 and D4 in paragraph 17 of the NPPF. Thank you, Chairman.
Perfect, thank you. That would be the sole reason for refusal, yes, okay. So, members, the revised recommendation proposed by councillor Martin and seconded by councillor Reynolds is that permission be refused for the reasons we've just, or the reason we've just heard. May I have those in favour of the recommendation to refuse?
Eight, Chair.
And those against? Abstention? Just the one. Thank you, members, the recommendation to refuse is agreed. At which point, I will say goodnight, and thank you for your forbearance later.
Was that for me? Thank you.
Well, yet again, members, I'm Taylan Charlie, taking over on the last application, which is B1 WA 2017 0639, the erection of extensions and alterations, conversion of integral garage into habitable accommodation at seven Heathfield Close, Godalming. Officers.
Thank you, Chairman. Members, this application is for, household or application for extensions and alterations to the existing dwelling. It's a location plan here, it's within Heathfield Close, within the developed area of Godalming. It's founded by Residential Properties. Existing dwelling is a two-storey dwelling with a sort of front cat slide section to it. Hopefully you can see that here, that's the front elevation, sort of a bit faded. And the rear there. The proposal is for, first of all, front extension and conversion of the existing integral garage to habitable accommodation, and a single-storey rear extension. Some extra parking would be created at the front of the dwelling as well. Looking at the floor plans, so as a ground floor at the front here, the garage converted to study, a single-storey rear extension here, and the first-floor extension here. Proposed front elevation here. The proposal is for a fairly wide first-floor extension. However, as shown in the existing site, existing front elevation, there's an existing cat slide that comes to the front. This would be sighted at the same front building line. So essentially, from the side here, you can see the existing cat slide at the front, and the proposal in the build-up over it. So although it is quite a wide extension, it's not very deep at the front. At the back, it is a rather simple, single-storey lean-to extension with three roof lights in it. You can see the depth here, and the depth here. Obviously, new front porch here as well. This application, as it's within the settlement boundary, design and visual amenity and impact on resi-amenity are the main considerations for you this evening. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Martin.
Thank you. Given the reason that this is before us, is because the agent is a borough councillor, I'm more than comfortable with this, and I would propose that we go straight to a vote, and see if anybody else has any comments.
Yes. And as I was going to say, I think that as it looks as if number six and number eight have in previous times enlarged their properties, I would have no objection to number seven doing likewise, so I have no objection.
Right, then can we go to the final recommendation, which is on page what? I'm not quite sure which page. Yes, so we can go there, so the recommendation is that permission be granted subject to condition of 1 to 3, and informatives 1 and 2 set out on pages 52 and 53 of the report. May I have your vote? Thank you very much. That concludes the meeting, thank you very much indeed.